Meeting in order, uh, go call please.
Councilmember Alcorona?
Yeah.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Proto, Obeso Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Tucker?
Here. Please stand for the pleasure of the leaders.
Ready to begin.
I would like to clarify that you have six hundred and sixty-two. And so the public just stands why should I be responsible with the decisions as well?
Adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Okay. City attorney reports on closed session?
Yes, the council, um, discussed labor negotiations as listed on the agenda with the employer organizations listed. Direction was given to the negotiator. The council discussed property negotiations related to the APNs listed on the agenda. Directions were given to the agency negotiator regarding price and terms. The council also discussed two matters of significant exposure to litigation and direction was given to council. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Public comments, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the ca- city council jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. And we have one here, um, Mr. Andrew.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, um, good evening. My name's Andrew Routh. I asked for an easier last name like Tucker, that'd be a good one.
Yeah.
But, uh, this is what I have. I work for the Novalk Company. We have an interest in three, um, neighborhood projects in the city of Imperial. They include the La Fuente subdivision, which has been for many years in Isor with half-built homes on the property next to south of Aitken. Uh, we also have an interest in the Mayfield Ranch development, ninety-seven lots in that development, and the Gazette Ranch, uh, property. For the last three years, I've been working full-time in the Central Valley on, um, another very large project that my commitment to that, uh, is over. And now I am here full-time to work on these projects. This last weekend, we removed the buildings that were on the, um, La Fuente site. This weekend, we intend to complete the work and clean that site so we can begin construction. There's complexity on that subdivision because we don't own all of the parcels. We paid the past due property tax on forty of the approximately fifty-eight parcels. And, uh, so we have to work out with the rest of our, uh, neighbors out there, uh, a plan. But we're, we feel confident that we can go forward and we intend to move forward with construction within the next two months. We are also very excited that we have lined up a construction team, finance team, and we're ready to build on Mayfield and ready to do grading work on the Gazette Ranch property. However, both of those properties have a severe, um, past due community facilities district assessment. When we bought those properties, we paid the past due property tax, we paid all of it, and we paid a, a significant portion of the past due CFD assessments. Uh, CFD assessments are the same as mellow ruse assessments. We are committed now and we've, uh, we've told the coun- uh, told city staff that we are prepared to pay the full principal amount of all past due CFD assessments. And if we can work with the council and city staff, we can go forward. Now, I know for the last three years, you haven't seen any progress from us. But I'm here and I would just ask, uh, an opportunity to prove that we can actually perform. So we're hoping that you would let us have two months, well.
Go ahead, Finn.
Just have two months so we can show you that we can actually do that. Because our plan is we've already invested over a million dollars in the city of Imperial and millions more in the Imperial Valley. Our, these three projects, we intend to invest more than fifty million dollars to build these projects. And we think it's a wonderful opportunity for the city of Imperial to have what it deserves in these neighborhoods, and we'd like an opportunity to prove that we can do it. And we would just ask for a couple more months to show that we can actually perform before you take, uh, legal action to try and, um, foreclose on those properties. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, seeing no others, um, presentation, proclamation, presentation for Public Works Week. City of, of Imperial proclamation, National Public Works Week. Whereas the American Public Works Association, APWA, has recognized National Public Works Week since nineteen sixty, highlighting the contribution of public works professionalism across the country and state. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities. And whereas the infrastructure facilities and service could not be provided without them, the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city of transportation, water treatment, and solid waste systems and public buildings. And whereas their commitment extends beyond routine maintenance as they respond to emergency repair damages and adapt to evolving needs. And whereas the Imperial City Council commends our public works team for the unwavering commission to improve in the quality of life in our community and acknowledge their essential contribution to shop, to shaping their city's future. Now therefore, I am Mayor James Tucker, on behalf of the City of Imperial Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth to twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five as National Public Works Week in the city of Imperial, passed and adopted on the twenty-first day of May, twenty-twenty-five at a regular meeting of the Imperial City Council. All righty. Would you like to meet me for a photo, please?
Absolutely.
Right after the picture.
We all know that. Wherever you'd like. I'll do it from here. I'll wait, I'll wait from there, takes you. Mayor, council members, I'd just like to say that although I'm accepting this on behalf of our public works department, I have to pretty much say, I gotta give the credit where the credit is due, and that is to our actual crew members that are outside in the field. They are the reason our infrastructure is maintained, improved. They're out there making sure operations are running smoothly, and if they're not, they're doing their best. They take care of the smallest things, whether we notice it or not, and it's those small things that make a big difference for the city. We have guys that are on call, having to roll out of bed at every hours of the day, and they do it, they get it done. And so I have to say, we have a great group, their skill sets are very well-rounded. They do everything we ask and then some. So again, the proclamation said a good amount of it, but our guys, they are a great set. And I just want to say thank you to them, all their hard work does not go unappreciated or unnoticed. So, and thank you guys very much.
You're gonna buy them all pizza for Friday?
They're, they're being appreciated tomorrow. I will tell you that.
Awesome.
I shouldn't say that. You could send them to cardinast for some carne asada.
Oh, my God.
Too soon, too soon.
A two, budget presentation by Victor Enriquez, Administration Service Director.
Do I do it around or at the end like this?
Um.
It's a short one this time?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead.
They've all got it stay anyways.
Uh, good evening, mayor, council members. Um, as part of the continuation for the budget for the upcoming fiscal year for twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, we're gonna be looking at the enterprise funds, uh, today and fleet services, uh, which is a couple shorts, so we'll get right in it. Uh, this is the, for the water plant, uh, budget allocation and increases. Uh, first column is last presentation has how we end up last year fiscal year. This is only operation, it, it takes aside CIP projects, uh, any, uh, bonds, anything, it's just to maintain and the running, the day-to-day of the actual operations. So we can compare everything the same way. So for twenty-three, we ended at two point eight. Uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we did budget it, or I budgeted seven point seven. But, uh, the only reason for that big drop-off, I, I had some, uh, CIP projects in there, which this year had not been there, so that's why you see a big drop-off. So, uh, my bad from last year. Uh, for this proposal here, um, we are, uh, proposing three point nine, which is lower than the forecast this year, but we have some, uh, uh, vehicle equipment and vehicles that we purchased, some equipment that, uh, we don't expect to buy next year. So that's why the, uh, propose is actually lower than the actual how we forecast for this current fiscal year. As allocations for the upcoming year for the water plant, we have none. Uh, budget increases, even though it's a decreased, uh, line item, it's a water, uh, meter base upgrade, which, uh, I think it hasn't been touched in a, quite a while, uh, based on the conversations I had with, uh, Mr. Dale. So that's the only big thing that's, uh, increasing, uh, from the regular operations from this current fiscal year. For, uh, wastewater plant, uh, this, uh, same columns, it has two departments, wastewater operations and collections. Uh, last fiscal year, we ended up at two point four. This current fiscal year, almost in line at two point six, and the request, the proposed request is for three point three million. Uh, for wastewater, there are actually two requests for allocations, which are two collection system workers, two, which have a financial impact of a hundred forty-five thousand. Uh, and the budget increase that you see from one year, from current year forecast to the next is the, uh, items below, which are contracts, uh, main, some, um, scheduled maintenance and additional services, uh, for smart cupboard and pumping services. So that's the difference you may see from a current fiscal year and the projected fiscal year. Well, for the projected and, uh, upcoming fiscal year. Any questions? Next, um, this is kinda new, uh, since we, last year, we did include a building and a fleet supervisor. This is more, uh, fleet overview that is going through, it's been funneled to public services. So I requested, um, that we present the fleet, the current fleet for operations for the entire city, which we currently have an inventory of sixty-seven vehicles, and you can see the breakdown by department.
Victor?
Yes?
I got a question on this one. The enterprise, uh, lease agreement, where's, where, where does it fall into all these? Or is it just staggered?
The, the vehicles are in there. How we pay for them, the, it's different, it depends, uh.
But not all these vehicles are through enterprise?
No, no, only, we only have in the city nine vehicles through enterprise. And I didn't, I didn't jog down which one, but I can remember like, uh, police has one, uh, IT has one, uh, public, uh, community development has two, uh, parks have two as well. And I don't remember the other one. But we have nine total vehicles through enterprise, being leased out through enterprise.
I'll get together with Dennis, 'cause I, I'd like to see that, see where we're at on that one.
And, and that's the same reason since this came about, uh, for the, uh, builders and, uh, fleet, uh, I've been requesting that everything funnels through them first, it's just through me, so they can explore the options, uh, financing and all that, and that's what, uh, Janelle and her team are doing. So, uh, they're gonna be the main point of contact for any upcoming fleet request. Uh, as you can see here, the, the new request I hadn't mentioned for general fund, uh, in the previous presentations are there. Uh, I also included, uh, street super, which is something that we are looking into. Uh, I know that's, uh, sorely missed and, uh, uh, not sorely missed, but, um, sorely needed. Uh, and we are looking at options. So right now, the approximate cost is a hundred, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand, which should be a, a capital improvement project, but I just noted there because it's going through them as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, for new requests for actual vehicles, uh, we have five, which is two for wastewater, which include, um, it's two pickup trucks.
Is it wastewater or water on here?
W- wastewater. No, it's wastewater.
Oh, here, we're still on the top, okay.
Yeah, it's under new request.
Yes.
So the, the, the sweeper is one thing, which we're looking at options, uh, there, we have leasing options or purchase outright, so we are looking at those options, uh, and how we're gonna operate it, so it's something that, uh, it's not coming this fiscal year because of the deep times, but it's something that we would need to plan out, uh, ahead of time. Uh, like I mentioned, wastewater is two pickup trucks, parks and recreation is two, also two pickup trucks, one three fifty, one fifty. And Department of Technology is requesting another vehicle, which is, uh, an escape, I believe so.
Do some of the vehicles, or do we fall where you have to have the clean vehicle fleet, or so many electric vehicles per your fleet?
Last meeting, as I remember through enterprise, because they, they do keep track of that, and when do we have to hit it? We are not at that point that we have to convert.
Okay.
So, but that, that usually, that was, uh, they, they're the ones that are going through the list and all that, and.
And, and we, we, um, enterprise does track the laws and provides us a list, but we'll, we'll update everyone on that. It's my understanding that we meet everything and they push them back every couple of years, so we are in compliance, but we haven't had a lot of demands.
And we, and we do work with our representative from Enterprise Fund, and she's the one that kinda lets us know when we have to meet them, what they would have to be.
That's amazing, yeah, I, 'cause I know when you get, once you hit so many vehicles, then you have to start adding electric ones, and so it's like you wanna keep your vehicles up that.
And, and enterprise, like, like, um, it goes through them and they just funnel the information. Uh, this is just request, like I said, it's gonna go funnel through fleet and we'll see if we have to or make some changes. As well, I know Community Development has a couple chargers coming, uh, projects, which include a couple vehicles, electric vehicles for the city, so maybe that keeps us in the, in the green, right, so. Uh, I do wanna mention, uh, that.
As long as the budget's in the green.
Well, this is, this is just once, uh, we'll, we'll get to needs eventually, so. Um, just we talk of the, with the, uh, chief about a new engine, so numbers, right now, it's, it's still undetermined, but it's close to over nine hundred thousand for a new one. So that's something, I didn't put it in there because it's still, uh, figure out how, how we're gonna do that one. And also, I do mention that currently, we do have five vehicles for surplus, that, uh, they have something wrong, or I don't have, I don't have the details of what exactly is wrong with them, but those are the vehicles that are currently up for surplus.
We'll actually be adding two more, yeah, which I forgot to put in the surplus, that'll be coming from parks, 'cause they're gonna do a fleet out, so that's why they're asking for two new ones, 'cause those surplus two out.
Yeah, okay. What do we do with like damaged, like wrecked vehicles, so let's just go?
For the damage, I don't know what we did with your police, uh.
So we use the GovDeals website?
Okay.
An auction website for public services?
So we did get some money back, so we do get for, when it goes up to auction, all that, we do get some monies and it's not a lot, but we put it back, uh, we do have some, uh, reserves under the, uh, our replacement fund, vehicle fund, so we do have, uh, monies there to replace vehicles. So if, uh, your trucks, if you're adding two more trucks, maybe we can grow something out, because I know those do hit the general fund, the parks and, uh, IT as well. So we can look into that, uh, once you get all the specs and numbers. Any questions on fleet? So like I said, it's real short, uh, presentation, we do still have, uh, painting items, and a major one for next upcoming, uh, meeting, uh, CIP projects. So there is, uh, where the majority of our money is going, as all the projects, uh, we keep adding and, uh, we do have some grant funding, but some of them are depleting our reserves for water and wastewater specifically. So I will give you the total amounts, the reserve amounts, and so you can have a clear picture, um, where each, uh, reserves stand and what, what projects can we afford in the current fiscal year and upcoming fiscal year. Also, we're talking about, um, like I mentioned, fund, funding sources, the gallon limit, so that way we can know exactly how much we, um, can spend. And try to tie everything together, like thirty thousand, uh, foot level, uh, for the budget. I did note here that, uh, we do need to schedule a detailed workshop session, so hopefully the eleven works for you guys, for everybody, or that week, that, that in-between week between meetings, so we can go over exactly, um, what we can or need to remove, approve, and, uh, I can have a little better cur- picture of what the total number we need.
That works for me, I'm just not available on the twelfth.
Okay.
Works for me.
Right, well, I'll set it, uh, to the city managers, and also hopefully, depending how that goes, uh, plan to adopt on the eighteen, and we don't need an extra session, uh, to expand. So that's it for today. For in speed, but this is all adding up to upcoming meetings.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You. Okay, now B, consent agen- agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person's request that any item be considered separately, that item will be then be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor.
Second?
I got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain from Mayor Tucker.
Thank you, guys. C, action item, discussion action. Awarded construction contract for the Anthony Redondo Park Improvement Project. Mr. Lopez?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, before I give you a, uh, you and the public a refresher on what the scope of work is gonna be for this project, I'm just gonna give you, uh, the summary, and then we can go into the Q and A of the, of the agenda item. So in late twenty-two, staff conducted a community survey with, within the Sky Ranch subdivision. That survey included, uh, different park designs, which they selected, uh, this one. We then in twenty-three, applied for the statewide Healthy Play and Education Funding Initiative through CPRS. Uh, we were awarded, they provided, uh, fifty percent of the cost of the equipment, um, and council approved the purchase of the equipment, which we already have, we have all the amenities, all the equipment already, the shade structures already in, in our possession. So this project now, uh, with city council's approval, will award the bid to construct and install all of the amenities we already have. So part of those amenities include, uh, all-inclusive, five to twelve composite structure, thirteen and up fitness equipment, solar lighting, connecting ADA accessible sidewalks throughout, pour-in-place surfacing, fully accessible to all with mobility limitations, uh, sensory features for auditory disabilities. Um, each play structure will have an overhead shade, which would can cover the entire structure. I know that, uh, that's something that's lax here, that we try to incorporate with, uh, any new project. And the expansion will be forty-five hundred square feet, uh, of an expansion with all these amenities included. So, uh, this project is a big, one of the bigger ones we've done, but this, uh, gives us and, and it dots all the i's and cross all the t's when it comes to all-inclusive. Uh, and then also providing a space where the public can come to, uh, more in the hotter months where it's shaded throughout, not just umbrella shade on the platform, so we're talking about shade that's covered in the entire structures, so and I'll, and I'll stand for, for any questions you guys have.
I like that it's very inclusive, um, the mock-up with the ramp there, I mean, that's gonna be amazing. I used to take my kids out at nighttime almost when the sun went down, remind me, is there lights there?
So there, there will be, so this, this, this project will have six solar lights incorporated into it, which will illuminate the project that we're building, and will, uh, allow us to expand, uh, in the future if we need to, so. Uh, yes, we will be, uh, adequately lit, uh, in, at least in this feature. And it does have pathway lighting around the park, but this will be specifically targeted for what's existing features and amenities there now, and the expansion of the, the, the play equipment and features that are there.
I don't necessarily have any questions, but I do have a comment just for the public listening and potentially watching on Facebook. Um, we, we happen to have the advantage of having the mock-up here to look at, if you go to the city's website and look up the city council agenda, you can click on the agenda item and it'll bring up the backup documentation, which includes the renderings of what the project will include.
And, uh, for the public to view, as we're in construction, we will have the renderings on the, uh, construction site as well, so that those that live within the subdivision and also that are visiting and are curious on what the park is gonna look like once it's completed, we will have those renderings on site.
Can you also put them like on Facebook?
Yes, we'll put them on Instagram as well, so, uh, first step is to get your blessed, the award, then we will put those things up to release to the public for, uh, them to look at this project and, and see, I mean, this is a great project, um. We're looking to, to maybe in the future, uh, with city councils, uh, um, um, support, doing more of these that are inclusive, not just a ramp into the features, but transitional platforms that actually allow kids with mobility issues to do things on the structures instead of just being able to wheel on to them, so. Uh, this is one of the first here that we've done in Imperial, and we look to do these more often. Like I said, as funding becomes available and city council, uh, uh, gives us that direction and, and, uh, support.
Thank you.
Thank you, I know, I appreciate this, I mean, every kid should be able to play on a playground, so, I love it.
I think it's a good start for our parks to, you know, model after this one. But I, I do have a couple of questions, the funding is coming out of.
So the funding will be coming out of the landscape district, um, they have, uh, after check with finance, and that's one of the things that we, uh, kind of pushed us out a little bit, it's just, uh, we've had a shift in finance, uh, in our team, so with Victor, his comfortability on what we could spend there, and making sure that we have those dollars to dedicate, this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars includes the labor compliance costs, all the construction installation and the contingency that's built within it. So hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have any issues underground or water table issues that will, uh, make us spend that contingency, so the project amount at the end might be less than four hundred fifty.
And, and there's no general fund, it's just.
There is no general fund impact on this project.
And all equipment is already, already paid for.
We have everything paid for, uh, already, yes.
And make a motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second, vote please.
Carries five zero.
Thank you.
Excited.
Just one more thing before we close it out, we will be doing, when we do the ribbon cutting, and we do that, we will be featured in, uh, CPRS magazine, uh, as one of the, uh, national demonstration sites, that's what they call these all-inclusive, all-well-rounded accessible playgrounds that they're funding throughout the state of California, so you guys will be, uh, getting notification when we do the ribbon cutting and all that, so that you guys can be a part of that.
Awesome.
Can they kick down some funding?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Next, C two. Awarded construction contract for the Aiden Boulevard sidewalk installation phase one project, bid number twenty twenty-five dash O five and adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, declaring total industries a non-responsive bidder. Mr. Mora?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Villegas will present the next three items.
Oh.
But it was gonna be the Oton Show.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, city staff and council members. Uh, this, uh, this is the, the project, just, uh, uh, Mayor, you mentioned it, and Community Development Department has secured funding from Federal Highway Administration through the con- congestion mitigation and quality air, um, improvement program. Uh, city, um, published, um, that the bid, uh, through the, uh, uh, the website, the plan rooms and our city web, uh, we run the competitive, uh, process, we received, uh, four, uh, bids, uh, but after reviewing the documents, which is a normal process, uh, for any bit, uh, 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 or competitive process, uh, we found out that truck industry failed to submit numerous of the, uh, documents that are required as part of the, uh, bids. So, uh, in that, that was the, the lowest bidder, so that's why we are requesting, um, through the, uh, uh, the, the approval of the, um, twenty twenty-five dash fourteen resolution to declare a non-responsive bidder. And we are, uh, basically, um, recommending the approval of, uh, or awarding a contract to Rob Engineering, which were the second, uh, lowest bidder. And also, we are asking for the authorization of a twenty percent contingency, uh, being the fact that we are working on a really old section of the city. Uh, just for, to put it in, um, in the reader, the project is along the northerly side of Aiden Boulevard, and the spam is between General Dynamics or Ricochet Building, uh, whichever name you want to use, up to Old Highway eighty-six, and I'm here to answer any question you might have.
And, any question?
I'm excited to see more sidewalks.
Will this all be included in one motion, both of these?
Yeah, you can do both and, yeah, you could do, choose to.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
And just to elaborate a little bit more about the comment about the, the sidewalks, did the phase one, uh, Community Development secured, uh, funding for three phases, so once this is, construction is ongoing, we'll start the southerly segment from, uh, Middle Road up to eighty-six, and afterwards, the northerly side of Aiden, from, uh, eighty-six up to the railroad tracks, so expect delays.
Right, appreciate it, thank you, sir.
And you could have come back.
Oh, I see.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, I will presenting the next agenda item, which is about the Aiden Boulevard Class Two bike lane.
Okay, that's gonna be C three.
Correct.
Authorized staff to record the notice of completion of the Aiden Road Class Two Bike Lane Project, bid twenty twenty-four dash O two. There you go, go ahead.
Uh, so Community Development was directed by city council to conduct the competitive bidding for this project, thereafter, the contract was awarded to Stendal Enterprises to perform the installation of a Class Two Bike Lane. And this project was also funded through the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program, CMAC, which comes from the Federal Highway Association, so it's federal funds, and also through LTA Measure D funds. The project, as we all are aware, it's fully completed since, uh, mid February twenty twenty-five. We presented this project to the California Transportation Commission and through a previous, uh, council meeting here, and, uh, we are recommending the acceptance of the work completed, and also the authorization to file a notice of completion to the Imperial Clinic Clerk Record Office, and I'm here for any questions you may ask, have.
Any question? And I, and, and I see where they're continuing to finish all the way to highway eighty-six.
Yeah, the first phase was from, uh, Austin to Vilare, and the next one, which came with, after the rehabilitation of Aiden from Vilare all the way to eighty-six, so it's gonna be a complete, you know, one, one, uh, bike lane.
All right, appreciate it, um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
I got a motion and a second, vote please.
Well, I'm glad that that.
Motion carries five zero.
I'm glad that that thermoplast was worth it.
Yeah, no, man, it's, it's, it's beautiful if I didn't say so myself.
Yeah, I love it, you gotta keep the bikers safe.
Yeah.
And you know what, in, in the beginning, when I couldn't picture it, I just thought it was gonna be a white line, and I just couldn't. And you know what, in in the beginning, when I couldn't picture it, I just thought it was gonna be a white line and I just couldn't. Yeah, I couldn't picture that, but now when we when you look at it, when we see the aerials out of that, makes it look a lot nicer.
It pops.
Absolutely, yeah, so good job.
Thank you. We we'll do another switch just.
Thank you.
Musical chairs.
Okay, next is C four. Awarded a survey contract for phase one of the EV charging station installation process. Thank you, sir.
So uh uh for this project, um again, uh Community Development Department has secured funding from Federal Highway Administration. Now through the carbon reduction program uh for the installation of the uh EV charger and the purchase of a vehicle. Um anyways, uh we completed or or we prepared the civil drawings in-house. But uh we still need to complete the um the portion for the electrical installation. Which need an an electrical engineer, so we sent out um request for quotes. Uh to several local and non-local um engineering firms. Uh we received two quotes to to get those electrical plants done and we received two. Two companies that excuse themselves because they don't do thi- this type of work. Uh the lowest bidder is J and A Electrical Engineering. And uh we are actually recommending to award a contract for the services of the preparation of those plans. Uh the fiscal impact is going to be seven thousand and eight hundred dollars and I'm here to answer any question you might have.
And where are they gonna be located and how many and are they for universal for all vehicles?
Uh yes, at the the place chosen to install uh those chargers. There will be at the end, three uh chargers, uh the 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 newest versions. Uh for universal uh connection, uh it's going to be in the parking lot behind the transit park. Um and uh we anticipate to install this first phase, I mean immediately after this contract is awarded. Uh we are going to prepare the plants and we are ready to start the the bidding process, competitive bidding process for the installation. And we work with uh ICTC and Caltrans to to combine phase two and phase three. So basically with these same uh uh electrical plants, we'll be able to install all three. If everything goes right, we should be able to have this first uh charger installed probably within three or four months. And probably at the beginning of next year, the other to to complete the the whole three. Uh but it's at the parking lot.
We're still doing six, right?
Within three three EV chargers and three vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yeah, for now. Yeah, we we anyways, we we have been working with ICTC. Looking for another opportunities to use um same funding uh to actually increase our capacity. They, for whatever reason, they like what we do and probably will will be able to increase that.
Oh, I have a question. Oh, um so, cause the chargers aren't free, right? So where does that revenue stream go to?
Oh oh okay, yeah, basically, we're we're right now, we're working on on that uh portion. We have to work with the finance department, but we agreed with uh ICTC that um. Once the the expenses are paid, whatever revenue we kept here. Here is going to be to keep improving the the transit park. So I an answer right now, I don't know what's is going to be the anticipated revenue. But uh it's going to be used for that purpose.
Do you have a particular charger company that you guys have already thought about? Have you thought about a particular company already in regards to the actual charger itself?
Uh yes, yes, we we already uh have one specific model chosen, which comes with the software. Uh to collect the money.
Okay.
Hopefully, we have a beautiful transit park.
It's going to be definitely beautiful and really high efficiency.
And it'll create its own income to maintain it. And create its own income.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so to elaborate a little bit more on that that the additional revenue, so we have to. Uh put the money back into the the transit park because it was uh mostly funded through FTA. Uh uh at a point in which we, I don't know, hopefully we make more money. Um then there has to be a a conversations with ICTC and FTA as to maybe we give him, you know. The money back for that particular area and then we continue to keep it, you know, we keep the extra revenue and we can use it throughout the city as well. But once, you know, I I think it's gonna take a couple of years.
We gotta get there first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely looking forward to it.
And a little bit opposite, but kinda on the same one. There's a vehicle, Tommy knows the, what kind of vehicle was that?
That was Arabian?
Arabian, they are looking at a place to put some, so Othon was mentioning that maybe that they can. Put some there, one of these days, I mean, it's just a thought, I mean, we didn't.
Yeah, but those those locations are for profit for themselves.
It's okay, I love Rivans and if we had a charger in Imperial, I would buy one.
So Othon was.
A nicer truck.
Othon was working hard at the convention. Alrighty. Any other questions?
So moved.
I got a motion and a second vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Keep it moving right along here, all right. D one, department reports, Mister Mora.
Um, real quick, the last week Community Development submitted um uh. Two applications what through STBG and CMAC and and AOB for uh rehab of Highway eighty-six. Uh we we utilized a three million dollars uh to underground the drain. And the CMAC will help to add um sidewalks and and bike lane, hopefully we get the money, so it was submitted last week. Uh and and hopefully hopefully we can provide that connectivity from Bayonne all the way to Aiden Boulevard and all the way to. Um ICTC, I IVC, I'm sorry. That's all I have.
All right, appreciate it, Public Services.
So I would like to point out that the County of Imperial, along with the City of Imperial, they're gonna be hosting a SB one workshop. That's gonna be on Thursday, May twenty-ninth at five thirty at the Imperial Veterans Hall. It gives residents a chance to provide feedback to help prioritize what road infrastructure needs to be repaired or just infrastructure in general. So we can get money from SB one and SB one is a funding measure that delivers revenue to the California counties. So I just wanna put that out there that they're gonna be having it on the twenty-ninth of like, uh yeah, five thirty. And one one more thing, since it is public work day, I just wanna reiterate that I wanna thank our guys for all their hard work and. As Christina pointed out to me, I had done the calculations for how many people we have and I forgot to mention, we have. Twenty-nine actual operational out in the field crew members, so I'd like to thank all twenty-nine of them and then you got me and David, so. We make up the other two, so again, thank you to them for all their hard work.
Correct, yeah, and also the public will be notified about the meeting.
Yes, for the SB one meeting, we already have it posted up on social media, we have it on app and then we'll have the the flyer and then the county has also been putting up their information too.
Is that the same time as our Park Town Hall one?
Yes.
So I would say uh skip that meeting for SB one. The regional park one, that was way cooler, um so you know, you don't have to be rushing after work. You know, ours is at six thirty, so you don't have to rush after work to get to that one, you know, you have a little bit of time.
Oh, it's not the same time, so when's that five thirty? Isn't that the same location?
No, it's it's the regional park is here. So uh I would still say skip the first one to come to the second one, but. I I uh first and foremost, wanted to uh thank um the city council and city manager's office for their support. Uh we wrapped up our last event for the season last Friday, I was skeptic. Taylor Swift people came out in the masses, um those little kids were were willing to cut you and fight you for their autographs.
Yes, they were.
It was it was cool to see, you know, everybody enjoying a good uh meal, there's a different fifteen different vendors for food. Um planning of seating, inviting people to stick around, we had people sticking around there from six o'clock all the way to ten o'clock at night and kids lined up to get autographs. Uh to the very end, so that was very areas very fun to see, it's kinda puts it in perspective on. Why uh you guys support that so heavy because it is a community benefit, people need to realize that. Uh without the city council's support, uh these things won't happen uh for the community, so. Um and then uh Parks and Rec team, you know, they they really do bust their humps. Uh to put these things on, uh every other department that's involved as well during the downtown events, it's really. A all hands-on deck process, so uh thank you to everybody involved. Um so the the next thing I kinda wanted to get into is that we did secure some funding for uh. If you are thinking you can't afford to do swim lessons or swim classes or different things like that. Uh give us a call at the Parks and Rec office, uh three five five three three one six. Or email us at parks at uh imperial.ca.gov. We have some funding that we can help out families that uh that can typically afford to pay for the swim lessons or privates. Uh we have some funding that we secured through CPRS to to aid with those costs. Um also, I was gonna mention the town hall next Thursday, six thirty here in Chambers. Uh we expect to see the entire community out here in full force. I hope you guys as council members, I'm inviting everybody to attend because the more feedback we get, the better we look on the application side. Uh when we submit, um we were very successful getting a bunch of kids building their park. Uh last Friday, we did, we doubled that effort, uh seniors, we did that engagement. Um I never felt like such a kid again and being in a room full of seniors, they made me feel like I was twelve years old again, but it was fun. Uh to be in there, um they had a lot of questions, they were. They were very thankful, they were very thankful that we actually uh got their input. Um they were saying that a lot of times they get forgotten about and I do agree that sometimes we forget about our seniors, so. Um we have applied uh for the Tree For All and the Glow Grant. Uh in partnership with Friends of Imperial Parks as a supporting application, so we hope with this first round. Uh since we were looking to do the work internally, like we did for Evans. That uh we're able to retrofit at least one of our baseball fields uh this round. And then if they have a reoccurring funding availability, maybe do the rest of them in phases as the years come by, so. We have applied for those, we're hoping to get awarded, they announced uh sometime in uh first week, mid-June. Uh so we we have high hopes for that funding as well. Uh CA Irving Project, we will be bringing you guys uh next week or next meeting for award. Um that came in uh for that paving project for uh Fourteenth Street Field. Uh we have that bid come in lower than expected, so that's great news. We have uh some contingency money to do other things, spread some more grindings, create more world roads and uh mitigate that dust issue over there. That's all funded by Rule Three Ten, so those are grant funds that we were to secure. And uh the last thing is, I was gonna mention you guys, we emailed you guys for the friends, you didn't get it? Okay, we'll we'll send that back to you, but um we have concluded the recruitment for the board. We have uh four serious uh applicants that actually responded, met with me in person. Uh and uh we're hoping to meet with uh city council appointments and commission appointments and the board members, hopefully. First uh or second week of June, depending on everybody's availability, I know it's crazy right now with budget and different things, um. And I wanted to see maybe when we can get you guys as far as Parks and Rec to get you a PowerPoint and ideas and. Input for next season. We are having some conversations about a bunch of different ideas, but they're just conversations that we need to have before we present to you guys for the workshop, so. In between here and July, I know you guys are being asked of a lot, but we need to get that in so we can release things systematically. So we'll begin with the city manager's office to kinda coordinate that.
And who are the new members?
Uh so we have uh John Sample, we have a board member here in the back hiding back there, Corey Shields. We have uh Anna Garcia and then we have Peter Martinez. So we have a very unique. Uh group of individuals that have a lot of different uh uh ideas and I would like to see, I'm interested to see how those all. Come together in one group, but the first step is to get everybody introduced to everybody and then come up with a strategic plan to move forward. How would you be use this uh nonprofit to the advantage of the city and how how we get this thing rolling?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I've I'd have to tell you, you were talking about some of the input that you received from the senior community. Um I've in in my previous job, I had the opportunity to do charrettes and stuff when doing grant applications and you'd be surprised how vocal little kids will get. And not just, you know, I want this, I want this, they'll tell you what they want, why they want it, where they want it. And we on one of ours, we even had like ten-year-old kids doing presentations in front of a whole group. A whole group, cause it gave them the opportunity for their voice to be heard. With this one little girl, all she wanted was a swing, she didn't care about any of the knife. Like, I want a swing and just it gives it gives them the opportunity to know that they're being considered also and it's it's.
It's community buy-in, right? I mean, it's the biggest thing, if they're not buying, if they're not buying in, then. Uh if we introduce different things that are on to fund these projects, they're not gonna wanna do it because they didn't have an option on on what to choose. So this is one of the most important parts of the process, uh we also have the school, uh all schools involved. Getting the to draw their own park, um uh so we're hitting all avenues here. Uh really excited about what this could become after we get this engagement part, uh some different funding sources. Uh get uh put out there through the state or federal government and then uh maybe make this thing come to life.
So that's like good to hear, I'm excited for that. I got a question for you, on those drawings that the kids did, is there any way to like put like a collage or something together so we can see what their ideas are?
Yeah, so so once once we get that, survey results will be put up, uh drawings will be put up. We have several pictures uh kind of as a throwback to last Friday's event that we took of all the kids. We had a cutouts of amenities that they wanted to see at their park, they put them on a blank uh canvas. So we have all that that will be unrolling uh as part of the social media side of uh the outreach. So everybody can kinda look back on how they were involved in the process, as well as seniors. Uh so the thing with seniors is you gotta give them food and coffee. If you don't show up with with empty-handed it, you're gonna you're not gonna listen to you, so. We made sure we fed them and we gave them plenty of caffeine.
I wonder if we could make like a template that we could like give as like to the schools or like the kids could draw it like in class and like submit it, I don't know, I think it'd be cool.
Gave them like a kind of a, we send it to all the principals uh across all the all the schools we have here, high school as well. It gave them a template of what uh like a a blank canvas drawn on here, this is what whatever your imagination can create. And then that's what we hope to receive at the, so we're collecting those next week.
I'll have to ask my kids' principal about it.
So if they ain't getting your principal, you need to get your on your principal's case for that.
We are on a first-name basis, thank you, my son.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mister Tony, uh Mister Rada?
Um I think Tony said enough, so. Thank you.
All's going well in the electronic department.
Everything's going fine, as we I reported uh a couple of min- uh minutes ago, all our projects are in place, everything is up and running. Preparing for the next uh fiscal year and just keep keep pushing.
All right, appreciate it, Chief.
So this uh thank you first of all for the approval and endorsement on the SRO MOU, I have already notified the school superintendent. That it got a thumbs up this evening, certainly a a less exciting process than last year's. But bringing up the schools is is kind of a a good segue to bring up the fact that Memorial Day is always gonna be the spike when it comes to DUIs. Traffic accidents involving injury, um so we would ask as a police department and leading into graduation, graduation parties. Be sensible, be responsible, and if you do if you drink, choose not to drive.
Thank you, Chief. Fire Chief.
Good evening, council, uh just to give you heads up, it's not a fire in Imperial, but it it indirectly affects all the fire agencies in the county. Um so uh we have multiple departments out at uh Palveri area, there's a five-hundred acre. Uh fire, they're actually on the Arizona side, but spotting on the California side. Um so we have uh Brawley, Hopeville, Calapatria, uh El Centro and County Fire Units there. Uh Riverside County is there as well as is uh BLM. Uh, Riverside County is there as well, as is, uh, B L M. Some B L M land on the Arizona side. Um, but again, our concern is the spotting on the California side and it getting into, uh, the township of, of Palaverty. Why I mention it, uh, is because it draws down resources all throughout the valley. Um, and, uh, each department's backfill policy is, is their policy, so we can't say you need to backfill and staff back up. So just make you aware of that, um, that, that those, those incidents, uh, do draw down significantly. And they affect, uh, all the, all the valley, uh, fire departments. Um, and then the, uh, other item is. Um. Victor mentioned the, uh, apparatus, uh, that we're looking at, um, as far as options. Um, when you see the prices, just know it's not my fault.
Alright, Mr. Manricus, is it your fault?
All right, um, no major updates, um, like I said, continue with the budget, uh, finish it out. Uh, we do have, uh, our external orders coming to town next week, um, to start, uh, getting caught up, uh, doing. Fiscal year twenty-four, so hopefully we get that on track, uh, faster than, than last year. That's it.
I was playing catch-up for a few years, so.
Kristin?
Uh, yes, so, um, while Tony's, just to plug Tony's department a little more. Uh, while his special events have ended, his rec programs are gearing up and so we've been busy bringing on the seasonal summer staff. Uh, we've been onboarding, we onboarded seventeen staff, um, since our last meeting. And, uh, we'll start off with, um, Brooke Brennan Recreation Leader One. And we have Landon Correo, Lifeguard One, Angel Calderon Recreation Leader Two. Orlando Casturita Recreation Leader One. Amel, Am- Amelie Elms Lifeguard One. We have Natalie Espino. Recreation Leader One, Chaney Gomez Lifeguard Three. We have Audrey Harmon Lifeguard One, Samuel Islas Recreation Leader Two. Dana Knight Lifeguard Three, Jennifer Laguna Pina Lifeguard One. We have Daniel Lemus Recreation Leader One. We have Lorenzo Molina Recreation Leader One. We have Cadence Morales Lifeguard One, Blake Moreno Recreation Leader One. Rosalia Ortega is Recreation Leader Three, and Taylor Sheffield Recreation Leader One. Uh, and so we are excited to have them come on board. Uh, we're looking forward to all the summer programs and we have a few more coming on board this next week. So you'll get to see their, uh, bright faces next meeting and, um, we're looking forward to seeing them.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Tom?
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick thank you and, uh, comment and, um, thank you for, uh, allowing me to attend the I C S C, uh, conference. And thank you to, um, Mr. Marita, city manager, for sending me to that, um, along with yourself and, uh. And Director, um, Mora, I think we did some good work out there continuing the past years and developing those, um. Relationships that'll hopefully, uh, develop into some, some positive development for the city. Um, it was real, um, honor to see out there that, um, we're seeing all the development here that's taken place in the last few years, some very, very good development. Um, but we're not the only ones. There's a lot of attention to, um, the city of Imperial of a lot of developers and. A lot of different organizations are, are seeing what's going on here and taking a real good look at, um, wanting to do business out here, so that, that was very positive.
Yep, appreciate it.
Yeah, I gotta admit, that is a good conference. But, uh, was your Uber ride as exciting as ours last year? Thank you for being out there.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Marita?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I have, uh, nothing to add, but I, 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 I have to say that the, the concept that. That I as a senior could make Tony feel like a little kid is. To get my arms around.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. City clerk?
I have nothing to add.
Um, I just wanted, we did attend on Monday night, the California League of Cities joint meeting with the River, County of Riverside. Which was a, a very nice collaboration between the two, um, communities, uh, with the special guest speaker, Assemblyman or. Assembly member Jeff Gonzalez and he had some, some information to provide us of what's going on up at state level. And we had the opportunity to just meet with some of our counterparts in the, the region. And, um, thank you to Dennis, our wonderful chauffeur. And, uh, we did, we did have a good time, but other than that, nothing to report.
Alright, thank you. Masayna?
Same thing, said a few words, it was a good time. I, uh, froze on somebody's name. Extremely sorry for that. I was so embarrassed, I was like, uh, anyways. Uh, no, it's always good. There is a couple of things with the talks of, um, some of the homes for alcohol and recovery and so forth. So there's a couple of bills that I did wanna bring up that are out there, um, that may be, um, beneficial for our. Area here, and there were S B three twenty-nine by Blake Spear and also S B thirty-five. So that would help with auditing of these, um, homes here. That potentially might have some investigations and so hopefully that gives a little bit of help to. People who might be concerned of, um, alcohol or recovery homes.
Alright, thank you.
Um, I was able to attend the Park After Dark and I would say that's like my favorite event that I've been to in a while. Even, you know, market days, so I, I picked up my kids from school and I was like, oh, we're gonna go eat dinner out at the park. And like walked around, then went and cooled off and then watched Taylor Swift, but it's so cool to just see like everybody hanging out at the park and it was very like. Low, I don't know, like not low-key, but like very relaxing and chill and it just seemed like everybody was having a good night. And the weather was absolutely perfect and so thank you to staff for putting that on.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Alfrana?
Uh, just a few, couple of things that I have. I, uh, had the privilege to be asked to. Join a group within I V C to, uh, they're gonna put on a law enforcement seminar. To recognize women in law enforcement to get more recruitment in, so I've been asked to be, join that group and. Said yes, so we're gonna start having meetings and figuring out, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna do this and all? So definitely look forward to that and all the good things to come. Uh, se- second, um, last Thursday, I had the privilege once again to be a judge. For the Ivy Regional Chamber of Commerce Margarita Challenge, the Battle of the Bars. That was interesting and that was fun. Um, some unique drinks, I will say that, very unique, uh, very different, some that I would never. Ever think of the combinations, um, I'll just leave it as very unique, uh, but it was fun, great event. Uh, I will echo what, uh, everybody else here has said, Park After Dark was amazing. Just watching people, you know, talking to different people, like figuring out, hey, where are you from? Well, I'm from Lexico. Why are you here? Cause you guys put on great events, oh, Central, Brawley, um, watching the kids on the front of the stage is jumping up and down. Uh, the adults dressed in, uh, the same way, you know, in their, uh, Swifty gear there. That was nice. And then the food, the, the, the different types of food, that was great. I tried different stuff that I hadn't normally tried. Um, and that was good to see, so, uh, once again, thanks to the staff for a great event. I know it takes an army to put that on. So thank you for all those involved. And lastly, we did go to League of Cities, um, that was interesting, it was fun. Ride back, I don't remember much, um, I did sleep in the back of the van, not comfortable, not comfortable, but I did it. So, um, glad I got to go, uh, meet with other people from other cities and see what they got going, so it was a good time. But other than that, you know, I just wanna say thank you to staff for, for everything, um, have a safe holiday and, uh, thank you guys for all you do.
Alright, thank you. Nothing, zero. Alright, no, uh, myself went to spend the weekend. At the International Council of Shopping Centers with Mr. Garcia and Mr. Mora and. I think we did some good work and hopefully we'll bring some businesses. We just can't tell you all the secrets who we talked to. But I appreciate it and we'll be adjourning the meeting to our next one on Wednesday, June fourth of twenty twenty-five.